Twenty five meeting of the Christiansburg Town Council to order. And as we always do, we will take a moment of reflection and I would ask you all to keep our former treasurer, finance director Val Tweedy in your thoughts and prayers. Her husband, Tom, passed away early this morning after a long illness. So if you'd take a moment to reflect, and I'd appreciate if you keep Tom and Val in your prayers. Thank you. If you'd all stand and join us in the pledge led by a council person. Tell me how.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to make an adjustment to the agenda and make a motion to reconsider the certification of the vote of the closed meeting that took place on August twenty-six, twenty twenty-five. And I have a statement to read in regard to that.
Is that for the motion?
And I
Yes.
want to make a second. Port town code section two dash sixty-seven. I would like to second the motion to reconsider the certification of our closed meeting of August twenty-six, twenty twenty-five. Town code section two dash sixty-six states, the dissent or protest must be filed in writing and be present at the next town council meeting in respectful language. The reason of my dissent and disclosure is that I don't feel we met the requirements under the Code Virginia two point two dash three seven one one A one. The requirements state that a request for a closed meeting to be discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates of for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion for performance, emotion, salary, disciplining, or resignation of a specific public officer's appointees or employees of any public body, and evaluation of performance in departments or schools to higher education where such evaluation will necessarily be involved in discussion with specific individuals. This is not what we took that took place. We did not discuss specific individuals. Instead, we discussed dates. We would inform that the mayor said that him and Alicia had thirty-one applicants, and Alicia said we had thirty applicants. And the mayor said that by the screening of H R, the list was down to ten. And after discussing with several council members and a quorum of council members, Barbara had assigned a search committee consisting of Angie Hill County Administrator Craig Meadows, the former county administrator Mark Vineyard, the town manager of Blacksburg, that they had the information that they had said they will have the list and Barbara had asked them to trim it down to from three to five, uh, five people, and that they will give us recommendations and they will have that back to town council on September the fifth. I said that I wasn't aware that this taking place, Mr. Barber replies, and that this was correct, and he had a quorum, that Mr. Bishop was in his office the day that they discussed this with him and Alicia and Mr. Jenkins. Sam replied that he was in the office for another reason. Mr. Barber said that yes, but yeah, the thing is that we came up with it and it was a screening committee. The mayor said he had Mr. Wilson, I had Mr. Jenkins, I had Mrs. Hackett. Bishop said that we were not meeting at the same time. A private quorum of mayor Mike Barber, council members, Tanya Hackett, Casey Jenkins, Sam Bishop, and Tim Wilson voted to establish a screening committee without the knowledge or recognition of councilwoman Kim Bowman or myself. Mayor Barber stated that he took this approach to avoid dealing with councilwoman Bowman and myself, both duly elected. Many of these facts came out in a FOIA request that were done by councilwoman Bowman to the county and the town of Blacksburg. The FOIA request that from the town of Christiansburg, they had yet to be provided. I'm almost done. Tim Wilson spoke to Mrs. Bowman after the meeting, um, Mr. Mrs. Bowman after the meeting, and stated that the conversation took place by phone. Tanya Hackett sent an email saying that the conversation occurred by phone. Both of these are now not valid ways of voting for FOIA law. I still yet to get a reply of the dates and times from my fellow council members. Transparency is important, and I, and I don't find any record of set meetings, votes, minutes of public disclosure of this meeting. For all these reasons and for the sake of the public transparency, I make that second to reconsider the certification of closed meeting held on August twenty-six, twenty twenty-five respectfully, Johanna Hicks, councilwoman. Crazy.
So is that a motion or just a statement?
That was a second.
Okay, very good. So we have a motion from Mrs. Bowman, second by Mrs. Hicks.
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett.
Aye.
It is four oh, thank you very much. Mr. Wilson is absent tonight, he's traveling on business. So we will add that into discussion and action by mayor and council, Mr. Broughton, is that where that would go in your, in your mind?
It's up to you, but yeah.
I mean.
Yeah.
Is that it? Okay. So it will be item F? All righty, thank you very much.
There is another motion I want to make. I want to, um, with the information that Mrs. Hackett had saying in one of the emails where, you know, it will be okay for us to actually review the applications, the thirty applications, I want to clarify that a closed meeting, that, um, you know, and our intention to look at those thirty applications tonight, I want to see if we can actually move that to another work session like she requested. So we have time to see that, especially since we got so many things coming up in this town council meeting tonight. And I want to make a motion to move the, uh, the closed meeting part, closing meeting part about the manager position to a work session.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Madam Clerk.
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett.
Aye.
All right, that's four oh, we'll move that off.
Thank you.
Now, uh, before we get into our, uh, public hearings, we, last week, we, our last meeting, we approved Reagan Smith as a student representative to the Christiansburg Recreation Department, and she was unable to attend last week. She's here this week, so Reagan, you are a junior, senior? Junior at Christiansburg High School. Very good, thank you. We have a, under our public hearings, we have an ordinance for a franchise agreement with Shenandoah Cable Television L L C, Shentel. Is there anyone here to address this issue? Randy, do you want to clarify anything on that, just to make sure we all?
This is basically the exact same agreement that we have with Comcast from five years ago. It's identical agreement with exception of the names, although we did have a request from them to extend the term from ten years to twenty years. I don't necessarily object to that, and I don't think Reed had any issues with that if council doesn't.
That's fine, as long as you do the, uh, public hearing process and bidding process.
It has to come back to town council again?
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess it'll come back at the end of the meeting.
Two weeks from now, it'll come back. There's no comments. Uh, and I, and just to clarify, this franchise's agreement is with Shentel, but isn't, it is not exclusive only to Shentel. Other cable agencies can operate in town if they so desire and have the capabilities to do so.
Correct. Like I say, Comcast has a similar agreement, it's non-exclusive, and Comcast has service throughout town. Shentel, of course, has existing service, but their agreement ran out about a month ago.
Okay.
Just trying to renew that.
So now, with that wealth of information, is there anyone here to address this issue? Seeing no one, I will close that portion of the public hearing. We have a public hearing on ordinance for code, excuse me, amendment request by the town of Christiansburg applicant to amend the Christiansburg Town Code, chapter forty-two, section forty-two dash eight, forty-two dash nine, lighting and minimum off-street parking sections, forty-two dash seven four three, four-two dash nine nine three, four-two dash one three four three, four-two one six one three, four-two one eight nine three, four-two two two four dash three, four-two five 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 dash three, corner lot section, forty-two dash thirty-three, forty-two dash sixty-eight, forty-two dash ninety-three, let me make sure I got that, forty-two dash one twenty-eight, forty-two dash one twenty-five, forty-two dash one eighty-three, forty-two dash two eighteen, forty-two dash two forty-nine, forty-two dash two eighty-one, forty-two dash three oh five, forty-two dash two two six, permitted uses as Christiansburg Town Code. The request is to alphabetize permitted uses and parking requirements to clarify some corner lot frontage requirements and to clarify the reasonable conditions may be imposed on the town, on the conditional use permit. Is there anyone here to address that? Hearing no one, I will close the public hearings. Next is the consent agenda, the approval of the minutes of twenty-two, August twenty-sixth, August twenty-sixth, the bill list in contact with Hurt and Profit for the Professional Engineering Services for the town's Renug Street sidewalk infill project in the amount of a hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion?
Yeah, the bill list.
Already asked questions.
Okay.
You got it?
Well, I wanted to find out still that information for that bill regarding, Randy, can you specify what happened with the, um, Hill, um, bill for the farmer's market, please?
It, it's basically a payment in regard, it's a follow-up payment for some meetings that they held. But basically, they have a schedule, and once they hit certain thresholds and, and meetings or some of those thresholds, they, they would receive payment, and that's happened.
And that's currently stopped right now, right?
Well, uh, for, yes, it has, so.
Okay, I appreciate that.
I think that should be the last, I guess, bill until further notice.
And then the money that we're getting for the sidewalks for the hundred and sixty thousand dollars, can you correct me if I'm wrong, is that under a grant?
It's C B D G grant. C D B G.
Uh, yes, that is the C D B G money, I believe.
Okay.
Correct, hundred and sixty thousand. Revenue sharing.
Okay.
Revenue sharing is fifty percent town, fifty percent V dot.
Okay, I appreciate it.
All right, very good. Any other comments or questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett.
Aye.
That is four oh. So we'll go into introductions and presentations, and as soon as I can find my list, we will make public the, uh, the application, the applicants for the, uh, vacant council, town council seat. I believe it is Deanna Cox, Amy Tuckwiler, Ashley Hill, and Christopher Waltz.
Amelia Tuckwiler.
You do have to make the applications available if the public would like to see them.
Yeah. Okay. Next, we have a presentation of the farmer's market result, survey results. Mrs. Bolt? Is that yours?
Yes, sir, it is. All right. I have the results of the farmer's market survey at the request of town council. We had nearly six hundred responses, which we are very happy about. That is the most in any survey that we've done since I've been here. So we're very pleased with that. I have a general summary of the kind of more generic information from the survey. So six percent of surveyors who took the survey do not live or work in Christiansburg. Ninety-four percent said that they do live and or work in Christiansburg. Seven percent of the surveyors who do not find value in a local farmer's market at all. Ninety-three percent of people who took the survey said they do find value in a local farmer's market, and that's just generally speaking. Nineteen percent of people who took the survey say they do not feel the town should continue running and organizing the Christiansburg Farmer's Market, and eighty-one percent of people who took the survey said they do feel that the town should continue organizing and running the farmer's market. This is in response to the question that read, read the following statements about farmer's markets in general, and select if you strongly disagree or agree. We only included the two exact percentages, but if you're interested in seeing the ones in between, of course, we can show you that. So we asked about economic value, do you see that a farmer's market in general brings economic value to a community? Community and social value, health and environmental value, cultural and identity value. On the survey, it explained more in detail what these are. So economic value in terms of, we gave a little descriptor so that people could be informed when making their decisions. So fifty-five point seven percent said yes, we strongly agree that there is a lot of economic value when a farmer's market is in a locality, and then five percent strongly disagree, and so on and so forth. Do you feel like a permanent farmer's market and gathering space structure adds value to the town of Christiansburg specifically? This is a more pointed question. People were asked to rate it with the stars. So three hundred and sixty-five people said yes, five stars, and then you can rate the rest and see where we landed. So four point three three is the value that people believe that a successful farmer's market would bring to the town of Christiansburg. I'm sorry, that a permanent farmer's market and gathering space would bring. Do you feel a successful farmer's market with a permanent structure could be a benefit to tourists? This is another question that came up when we were discussing all the possibilities with the market and who it benefited, and considering the vendors, considering the public, considering the town's position, but also considering the tourists. Eighty-three point two percent of people who took the survey said yes, they feel like it could be a benefit to tourists who are visiting, who might be interested in stopping by. Sixteen point eight percent said no. Where should the Christiansburg Farmer's Market be located? This is the big question. These are our results. So if you look at the left, you'll see the overwhelming majority says downtown. Now, that's broken into two separate areas. From the bottom to about midway are people who said that they thought it should be on Hickok Street, but from the bottom to the very top are people who said anywhere downtown, Hickok Street or not, we just believe that it should be downtown. The tan area is not downtown. The brown area has no opinion on location, and then other. What we've done with the pie chart to the right is pull out the information from other to see where it is, if you selected other, you would like to see the farmer's market. And the overwhelming majority said Christiansburg Huckleberry Park, it's seventy-seven percent. So, um, there were eighty-seven people who took the survey and said they wanted to see it at an other, a different location, and of those eighty-seven people, seventy-seven percent of them said at the park felt like the best location. If you selected other, you also have the opportunity to say, um, to type in where you would like the market. So some people did say things like the Wade's Building, the Wells Fargo lot, different things like that, and that's broken down in the other location area. This is the same chart, but a different visual. One thing we've been talking a lot about, it seems, with town council and the staff, is transparency and how we want to maintain that level that we feel we offer. So this is just kind of looking at the same information in two different ways. So on the left is what I previously showed you. On the right, we've separated Hickok Street and downtown, open to any location downtown, and that's on the far right in the blue. So you can see downtown, both options are still the majority, but it just looks a little different. And so we want to, we didn't want anyone to feel like we were stacking a certain way. We're just giving the information based on the results. I have some information that I can send you all. We did have an open-ended question on our survey that said, if you were interested or maybe wanting to come to the farmer's market and haven't, what would make you more interested in coming? These are just a few things that represent a variety of feedback that we thought. Some of it was, I would come if it continues to be at Christiansburg Huckleberry Park, and you can see that that is underlined here. This is another one in favor of Huckleberry Park, and then here's a comment in favor of Hickok Street. Here's a comment speaking to the frustration with not having a consistent location in times. This is speaking to a different time, maybe a different date. This is one saying why they feel like the park isn't a great location. So there's a variety of feedback. What we did is pull out the statistical information to represent quality, quantitative data, but this is some of the qualitative data that reflects how people are feeling just without facts and figures. And this is what I will leave you with. So we mentioned before that there is a lot to consider, a lot for town council to consider, and we will support town council's decision, whatever it may be. But I did want to touch on three points that we considered during the survey that have come up in question. So the survey was anonymous. Anonymity means honest feedback. So we felt that this was the best path forward to make sure that people were giving us our, their honest opinions without fear of retaliation or fear of, you know, maybe being a business owner and seeing things differently than another business owner. Validity, yes, I'm just going to face it head-on. It is technically possible that a group could have gotten together and tried to sway the survey results because of the anonymity. However, we did look at trends, we looked at the data, we looked at the facts and figures, we looked at the time stance of when people were submitting their survey responses, and did not see any overwhelming responses that made it seem like there were fifty people who are trying to say the same thing to sway the survey in one particular direction, or bomb a question to make it lean one particular way. Our results across the board were all over the place, and six hundred people to take a survey, whether it's a few people that maybe took it multiple times, there's no indication that there would have been any response to try and sabotage the result based off of the data. And then how should we use this survey? So this does not mean that because the majority says downtown, that that's where we have to put the park. This survey is one tool, I'm sorry, have to put the farmer's market. This survey is one tool that you all have to go along with all the other options and conversations and things surrounding the farmer's market for you to consider. And a few of those things to consider we put on the right, which you all very well know, but vendor input, public input, accessibility, should we have two separate locations, the art grant, how that money is used, taxpayer money, and in what ways, if we do move downtown, can town council support downtown revitalization to make sure that the market's set up for success? If we decide we want to go that direction, a market is not going to turn our downtown around, we all know that. It's going to be one good thing, but there have to be other things that's supported, or the market will build downtown. So, um, we recognize there's a lot to consider, including asking ourselves some tough questions, but as I mentioned at the end of the day, staff will support whatever it is town council decides.
Good. Thank you. Comments, questions?
I feel, um, the one thing that I wish it was on the survey, it was the, the money implications. There was really, I mean, there was a link to our work session, which is great, but most people are not going to care about watching the video. And I feel like we couldn't really have done a better job to explain to the people what the cost will be associated with something like this, we were to do in Hickok Street, well, the cost will be associated when we continue to do at the Huckleberry Park. Uh, you know, there were comments in there that I watched, um, specifically from, you know, like the one vendor went on all the time, just replying, 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 but at the same time, there were people there saying, you know, um, we continue to have this and that, it's going to affect our games and our sports and all this stuff or whatever. But then there may be a consideration later on, if we were to continue that farmer's market over there, that there would be another expense associated with that, which it can be millions of dollars, because now you're talking about parking spaces. So, um, that's my only comment about it, but thank you.
I'll say that seeing the community responses, so I, I mean, obviously, this is the first time I see, I saw this, but just seeing the responses on the post and the posts that were made on like Facebook, and I feel like I saw something on Nextdoor, but there was like posts out there, and I was really surprised at the support to put it downtown, and I was surprised that people talked about, uh, I mean, there were people who were aware of the cost and were still super supportive of it being downtown. So that, I mean, I've been really open to considering other locations, I've been a huge supporter of it being downtown, uh, and that, as you know, I, at the work session, I was ready to change my mind, um, but I, I mean, I'm very swayed to support the downtown location, uh, just based on the community feedback, and then this just kind of cements that, I think, in my mind, so. I think the community's been clear about their, what their preference is as a whole.
I know, council, we're going to talk about this more in discussion by mayor and council, so we'll get a little deeper into the, into the game plan. Thank you very much. Next, we have Dan Santa Luca. Did I get it close?
Close, San Lucia.
Thank you. Well, yeah. Advanced Erosystem, Enviro Systems Incorporated.
Would it be okay if I stand over here next to the slide so I can face everybody?
If you do, can you take the microphone?
If you want to take the microphone there with you, unless you, you project fairly well, so we'll see.
All right, should I take it then?
Take it just in case.
I'll try it without it, and then you tell me if it's audible. First of all, uh, thank you very much for the opportunity to present to the group. My name is Dan San Lucia, I'm with Advanced Enviro Solutions, a company that I founded about eighteen years ago, primarily focused on commercial H V A C with specialties in pool humidification and dedicated outdoor air systems and some other ancillary products that go along with it to complement it. So I felt compelled to share this story with the town council and management team, as well as with any town people that would show up here this evening. It is mostly with the intent of lessons learned type thing. I know I've learned some lessons, but I still feel that there's more that can be accomplished with this dialogue. So with that said, this is referring to the Christiansburg Aquatic Center project that was fairly recently awarded, I think it was back in the June timeframe. It was for H V A C renovation and upgrade, primarily large dehumidification air handlers and some ancillary items that went along with it. So, um, to the point, we had an alternate solution for quite some time through the bid process, but it was never considered due to, and I respectfully say this, protocol, following the laws as a town for bid process, state regulations and laws and so forth. So it, under that heading, it was never considered. Summary proposal that had that alternate solution in it was, was hand-delivered to several of the project team members at, at a certain point in time. I actually have the exact date, but essentially the result, and I'm, this is a little bit of the what, and then I want to talk about the process, but here's what ended up happening. A five, five million dollars in capital expenditure upfront savings were, got bypassed versus the awarded solution. And I can go as deep as we can possibly go, but I've got to limit this because of the time constraint here. But we actually had a solution that was five million dollars below that of the awarded solution, roughly about fifty percent. Now, I'll show you the figures in a very columnar fashion here before I you the figures in a very columnar fashion here before it's all of a sudden done. There was no weak link in the armor. It wasn't just it was a cheaper solution. Sometimes the term is used value engineering because you're taking something out to save money. That was not the case here. It would be easy for one to think and believe that because of the price difference, that it couldn't possibly be near the caliber of the awarded solution. Could not be farther from the truth. The difference maker, to a large extent, accounting for the difference in the price tag, was the fact that, and I'll show you this in picture format and in text format, that there was no need with our design, that is where the superiority of this comes. We believe we've got very competitive equipment. We're the preeminent manufacturer that we represent, that's been in the industry for 50 years and is the true made in the USA firm out of Wisconsin. I'm going to extremes here to try to avoid turning this into a marketing pitch, so I'm not mentioning names and brands to the extent that I can, unless, of course, somebody asks. But the bottom line is, there was, what was not part of our design was, there was no need to move earth. There was no need to do all the excavation work to make room for oversized equipment. There was no need to move a retainer wall. And I'll get to that here in, on the next slide. But it was a technically sound solution that never made it to the table. And I'll, I'm prepared to explain exactly why that is based on the protocol. There was no weak link, as I said. It was a preeminent manufacturer and pool dehumidifier. It's a name that's, if you know anything about that niche, it's synonymous with that niche industry. Made in the USA, so I don't know what tariff implications might have been involved at the end of the day versus the competition coming out of Canada. The project team knew of an alternate solution waiting in the wings. We asked repeatedly for an audience. All we wanted was, we're looking to be awarded the product, project, just by showing up. We just wanted the opportunity to say, you need to see this. It's going to be very compelling to you, you know, if you do. So the project team was well aware of it and the rough order of magnitude savings because I was shouting it from the mountaintops for anybody who could possibly hear it. And again, we asked repeatedly for an audience. So here's what I was referring to earlier. Get on this side here. Behind the superior solution, and maybe it better put here would be what's not behind the superior solution. No earth moving was required, none. No massive retainer wall relocation, none. No water line modification, none. No outbuilding relocation. No additional equipment pad deport with a unit across the walkway on the backside of the building. No additional ducting, piping, power runs, again, for the unit across the walkway. And then for the leisure pool, our unit did not encroach on the walkway, as I believe our competitors' unit did. This is, this is major league contribution to the $5 million delta that was in the budgetary proposal of the alternate design. And that's what was hand-delivered. It may not have been in the official legitimate format of an absolute official bid, but it was made aware to the project team. And when, and here's the crux of it. All of the contractors that we worked with, and there were several, they bought into this solution so completely that the comments we were getting, and I'm not exaggerating, were, this is insane. How is this not the basis of design bid? When you can eliminate all of this, all of this unnecessary. So that a lot of the dollars that went into the $10.6 million award were not things that are going to give you a return on investment, such as the equipment itself, that is more efficient and doing a better job to remove the temperature, the condition of the space in terms of temperature humidity and remove the nasty chlorine air more effectively, exhaust it. So this, this is what was a large part of what was spent in that additional $5 million delta. I do have a, and this is online. This is not a live link here, but this is the link for anybody who wants to take a look at this if they're interested enough. It's an interactive 3D model of the building and the outdoor equipment showing our design. And then it shows various angular views of the competition and leisure pool, equipment yards, and what's missing is the most important and telling part. It's a very effective visual tool for both the expert and the layman. This is a snapshot of that 3D modeling tool. Again, the link is right there. This is the competition side. So looking down on this equipment yard with the retainer wall, what you'll notice is, the grass hill that's there yesterday is there tomorrow. The, there is no unit up over on this side of the sidewalk and removing the outbuilding that's there and having a port pad and then ducting and plumbing wire into the building from over on this side. All of the equipment fit in here. I'm happy to explain in gruesome detail, although it's a bit difficult for me to reminisce, if you will, but I can explain what the yellow objects are and the fact that these are the three large dehumifiers that would have satisfied this part of the building. Of course, our, our solution also included some other things like fabric duct and so forth. We had that as part of our overall package. So, so again, what's missing here is, is what's very telling. Everything fit within the existing retainer wall. There is no retainer wall that needed to be extended, excavated grass hill, move a water pipe. All of that was gone. We, we had told this and asked for an audience to explain this in gory detail. I will tell you that we had, what I feel was a little bit of an unfair advantage, and one of the members of our team is an absolute brainiac. He came up with this solution. And as I said, the contractors bought in hook, line, and sinker, but they counted on the fact that when this went over budget, you'd feel it was if. It was a matter of when. And it did. They were right, that we would get our shot to present the alternate solution. Like in other words, when the pause button was pushed and the, and the initial round was canceled because there were no bidders, zero bidders, which is another story in and of itself. There were no bidders on the initial round. It was felt that we would get our opportunity. We never did. Then round two came, and it wasn't just a matter of there were no bidders. There was, there was one bid, one bid, for that size project, $10 million. That speaks volumes right there on its own. But the one bid was, and I'll show the figures here in just a moment. This is the, this is the leisure pool. This is a little more simple, and I'll get to the figures. But, but this, this here is, again, fitting all inside the existing mechanical yard that was already in place without spilling over into the sidewalk. So the alternate solution was not coming from an unknown entity. We've been at it for 18 years as a rep firm with, and there were two of us, two rep firms that tag teamed this because of the engineer, where the engineer fell and where the contractors and installation site fell territory-wise. So you can see there 50 years as a manufacturer and two rep firms collectively with 40-plus years, and including a brainiac in our team who came up with this design, worked on the project for four-plus years. So we weren't showing up the 11th hour and just lowballing it. This is not a lowball thing. This was simply a superior design. Shut out in the name of protocol. I get it, that everybody's feeling they're following the law, they're, but there's got to be a balance. And I think, I'm hoping that out of this, because I'm not here trying to reverse the decision or having an impact on it three months or four months after the award was made. That's kind of self-evident that I'm here for another reason. And then competitive and fair bid process. So here's my questions that I want to learn. The ability to present an alternate solution, what does it take? If you keep referring somebody back to the engineer who has no incentive to review an alternate because they put the design together, you're having us go back to the guy who preached his own gospel, now we're going to tell him a new gospel. We were going, we were being referred back to a dead end. We were going in a loop of being told by the town personnel to go see the engineer. But we did, and I did, and we were told we would get that opportunity. We did. Ability for other competitors to present. We're not looking for an unfair advantage. So my take is, you take the protocol, and was, was the project team inundated with such requests? I would argue positively not. With one bid in the end, I think there's your proof. And how many such requests and parties in, coming from parties in total? We're probably the only ones, but we weren't asking to be the only one. So is it better to deny reputable competitor in terms of a manufacturer and a representative, a manufacturer rep like ourselves, the opportunity to present an alternate solution? Or perhaps better to provide all competitors with that same opportunity and keep it competitive and keep it fair, so that you stay within the guidelines and regulations of a fair and competitive bid process? So $5 million later of additional taxpayer money after the fact, a superior solution bypass, this was the solution that was going to keep on giving. This was not a VE or inferior lesser solution. The performance criteria, there's something called COP, coefficient of performance. Energy in, work out, superior all the way through. So, so this was going to be, this was going to keep giving on the backend with the OPEC side of things as well. Contractors fully expected the project to go over budget, which it did, and then the opportunity to present the alternate never happened. Instead, unexpectedly, funds were taken from other areas of the town budget and applied to cover the almost $2 million over budget figure. So here it is, and if anybody wants to correct this, I'm, I'm here with the idea that this was my, did research. This is my best understanding of the, of the dollar figures involved. The lone bid on the second round was awarded at $10.6 million, with a big chunk of that, I'm sure, being unnecessary general contractor-type work with the excavation and moving of the various items I mentioned earlier. 8.7 was what the project was budgeted for. I think originally it started off lower than that, but it eventually got to this level where that was kind of the official budget, I believe. That means it was over by $1.9 million. These are, these are rounded off figures, but they're very close. And again, taken from other funds. $5.5 million was the alternate solution. That's on the high end. That solution was delivered as a budgetary proposal for an alternate design that ranged between $4.5 to $5.5 million. This is based on the high end of that. So the savings could have been closer to $6 million. Even if it was off by as much as a gross half a million or a million dollars going the other way, this figure might have been 4.5, but it was probably closer to six than five. So worth asking is, as it's been leaned on to say, hey, we followed protocol. We did it the right way. We followed the law. That claim, or looking for ways to improve the process, may be a balance, to be able to have somebody that really scream and say, you got to look at this, to get that opportunity, while you also give the competition the same opportunity to present on their end. I, I worked directly for manufacturers as a regional manager for, I don't know, 20 years. And I traveled all over the US. There used to be data centers. I was on the data center cooling side of things before I started my own rep firm 18 years ago. And we would go in as teams. You would literally see the next team, your competition, say, hey, George, how you doing? Good luck. And he'd be walking in behind you to present to the, to the owner and the engineer what your solution was. This never got heard. If I had the opportunity to sit in front of, and some of you may be more technically inclined than others, this might be right up your alley, this, you know, HVAC, I'm, I'm not guessing here. I'm telling you, convinced. This is the superior solution. We just didn't get the chance to present it. And it's a shame because we, we worked long and hard on it. Yep, that's a good part of the reason why I'm here, my incentive. But it really doesn't end with just my reason for being here. It's, I'm hoping there's a lesson to be learned here, because that's, that's not chump change. That's, that's significant dollars. And I, given the chance, for anybody who would be interested, I can clearly demonstrate that, that this is, this is real. This is not just a biased opinion. So that's why I felt compelled to show up, even though it is several months post-award and without expectations that we're going to have any impact on the decision. That's a done deal.
Thank you. Questions?
Yeah. I thank you for coming out and sharing this. I really don't know what to say. Johanna Hickson, myself, tried to take one more meeting so that we could look at this a little bit more carefully before we were rushed into a decision in the final budget meeting. And I really wish that we would have taken that time to save the taxpayers some money with another bid process.
Thank you. Mr. Broughton, do you have a comment?
I guess the comment would be that the town is required to follow the Public Procurement Act, and that means selecting the lowest bidder.
Dan, how many times did you bid on this project? Did you ever submit a bid?
We submitted a, remember?
Did you submit a bid through the proper channels, is what I'm asking you?
We, we submitted our proposal, right, because the bids come to the contractors, right? I'm not going to, I'm not a contractor. I'm an equipment supplier. So my job is to educate and sell to the contractors. They in turn, so you got the equipment supplier, kind of the food chain is, we're on the bottom of the food chain. We're used to that. But there's us, the mechanical contractors, who then feed their proposals to the general contractor, who then submits his proposal to the town for review. So we, we provided a basis of design. We, we tried to cover every imaginable base and do it the right way. We did a basis of design, which wasn't to our ultimate advantage, but we did it saying, we're going to, we're going to come as close as we can to what you're asking for based on a basis of design that's centered around a competitor's piece of equipment. But we did that just for, we called that the price of admission. Not our, that wasn't really our horse in the race. Our horse in the race was the alternate solution. But in order to be able to enter the race, we thought, let's make sure we do the basis of design bid, again, not, not our big, our best horse in the race, and then we'll get our chance to propose the alternate solution. We, we told the contractors, we showed them, they got full-blown proposals and even a, I mean, a very thick document submittal showing, pages showing, for example, energy savings over time versus the competition.
So your contractors, the general contractors that you were talking with, did not, did not submit a legal bid. Is that correct? That's all I'm asking you. Is that correct? Did your contractor submit an official bid through the protocol?
Yes. The one contractor-
That's not correct.
-hand-delivered several copies of the alternate, the budgetary proposal with the alternate design.
Mr. Wingfield?
That's not correct. We didn't receive a qualifying bid from the gentleman.
He's, that's not what he said, Randy. He said-
No, I agree.
Timeout. The question was, did you all, your representative, put a formal bid that is, that meets the state, meets the state protocol to the town of Christiansburg?
To, from our, from us to the contractors, we did, we gave them official bid. It was up to them to provide-
And they, and they did not-
They elected to, that's, this is what they said, let's put in the basis of design bid. This is going to go over budget. We'll get our opportunity to sit in front of the project team and go through the alternate solution, which never happened.
Okay. Thank you. John Edisto?
Yeah. So I don't think it's fair for us to scream at somebody that's doing a presentation and getting nothing in return as far as he really told us that he's not, he really didn't get the award and bid and, and everything else. So I don't think it's okay for us to jump on someone like him. I do think that I am glad to see this presentation. I am glad to learn some of the educational facts of what you're bringing to the table. I wish I was one of those council members that had requested more information about, you know, do we have any other information or anything like that? And then it comes down to supposedly, this gentleman, his company have been working and trying to figure out how to work with the town for years. And we heard from one of our employees that said, we were lucky to get this bid. We needed to do this right now and right then, when we have been dealing with this system for years and years and years. And so now all of a sudden, the town council, or my fellow council members decided to go right ahead and push this through over $10 million, but that's not what the RFP was for. We had only $8 million- We had only a million dollars budgeted into this. And like what he's saying, I mean, he's doing the research. There were over two million dollars that went over budget on this.
1.9 million over.
1.9 million dollars. And, and at the same time, we are supposed to be here trying to get this information? And so I'm not just saying it for you or for anybody else that's doing any projects with the town. I would love to see more of these presentations in the future? Because they are learning educational things and tools that we can use as council members? Because we're not doing you guys' job, obviously. And that's not what we're hired to do. But we are definitely supposed to be doing some oversight and definitely budgeting. And so when I have taxpayers asking me, why is this costing over 10 million dollars? I have to look at them and say, that's the best we got. We didn't have anybody else looking into this.
We didn't have any other bid?
Well, it's not just about the bid, it's the process. I wanted to go back to the RFP. I wanted more responses as far as warranties. We didn't even get information about the warranty system that we're supposed to get with this unit that we, we just currently awarded. And so, no, you could do ARPs all day long. And I understand he's not, you know, he's not doing, he already told us, he's not in the process of doing that. It's an educational tool for us to learn a little bit more about what we're doing in systems that we're putting in, in these places. So?
Okay. Very good.
I, I have a question. Is, uh, what, what would we have done with this information? We, right, you're not the, you, you have to, have to have a contractor to work with? So a contractor needs to accept your design, is that right?
Yes.
So with this information, what could we have done? We can't force the contractor to work with someone else, right?
Correct. We, and we wouldn't simply want to buy units without them being installed. The, the process is that we put out a bid, we actually did it twice? And he was aware of both bids and chose not to bid on it. You know, the second time we bid?
Or his representative?
That's, that's not accurate. You, you, you called me out early when?
You did not submit a bid.
Did you submit? I said no. And then, and then you contradict it.
We, we, we only received one, we only received one bid. We, we only received one bid.
And that's what we had to work with.
So can I just ask what?
The bid you received was from a general contractor, correct?
Yes.
The one bid. So you got zero on the first round and one in the second round. Wouldn't that be telling to you? I wouldn't call that fortunate. I call that, that's a, that's a, that's a red flag.
You were aware of the dates you could have submitted.
That's exactly, I mean, that's the point. Tanya, I think you have?
Yeah, I had another question. What is the change that you would like to see in the process?
The ability for somebody who's, uh, has an alternate bid? That the engineer said, you're gonna, you'll get your chance, we're open to that, you'll get your chance? And then stop answering the phone?
Do we know what that means? You'll get your chance?
You'll get your chance to present your alternate bid?
To, I mean?
We're, we're open to considering, I'm talking about from the engineer's team more.
The engineer at the town or?
Get with them and present the alternate bid. It didn't happen.
The engineer at the town?
And, and so the town's telling us to go to the engineer. That's, we hired them, they're the experts. And there's a story with that too, that I'll reserve for another day in time if that, if that ever comes. But the fact is that we were, we were directed, you know, go back to the engineer. I did repeatedly, never got the opportunity there.
But who's, I'm sorry, who's the engineer? The engineer on the contractor's team? The engineer on the contractor's team, not an engineer at the town?
No, the, the, the professional engineer consultant.
The firm we hired to, to study.
Got it.
Yeah. That we were referred back to them, which, and, and, uh, phone calls and, and emails and so forth saying, we, we got this. I've got, I've got the copies of the emails and the, and the dates. I asked repeatedly, you really need to look at this. And, and then I was told in the phone, but you'll get that chance.
But the contract, now the town, I guess I want to be sure, the town didn't tell you, you'll get the chance? It was the contractor?
No, it was the, but the town is the one that kept directing me to go talk to the engineer?
Right.
Which I did.
Cause I, I don't suppose the town could do much with the information without the bid, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. So the process that you would like to see changed is you would like, uh, for the town to facilitate conversations between you all and contractors?
To, to be able to present to the town? So at least you could have seen, uh, you or the project team, which is the more technical, you know, the engineers on the project? Could have seen something that they never saw. They ended up not seeing in the end. They could, they could have looked at, here's, here's what the discussion went like. Go see the engineer. And I'm like, I, I want everybody to the table. I, I'm not trying to go over here and find a faction that I could, you know, divide and conquer. I wanted everybody, uh, at the table together. Engineer, whatever contractors you wanted there, and the town, the whole project team. Everybody sit there. We were, we had a, a dynamite presentation ready to deliver. We, we knew that once it was seen and heard, it was going to be a game changer.
Yeah. Is that a policy? I mean, is that some kind of a policy we can dictate with the proto, with the procurement protocol, the way that it is?
If we engage with a prospective bidder in writing the criteria for the bid? Then I would think we'd have to disqualify them from the bid process.
Okay. And then, I mean, I guess in just in, in, just for, in the, you know, to be fair and transparent?
Write it that way. We're asking to present. All we want to do is present. How it got handled after that would be, I mean, it's kind of the same way with, when an engineer, he selects a, a, a basis of design manufacturer? On which everything is based at, from that point on? It's not all that dissimilar from, from doing that, is it not? Would you call that down the same, roughly down the same channel?
Again, we had bid dates. It was the first advertisement?
Get the microphone ready.
First advertisement was January 30th. We had a pre-construction, I guess, pre-bid meeting on February 20, 20th? And the open bids, which we received none, were March 17th. The second bid was advertised on April 14th. We had a pre-bid, pre-bid meeting on April 24th? And the bids were open on May 23rd? And again, we only received one bid. We do have to basically go with the bidder that we received? You know, receiving a call after the fact saying, I'd like to do business with you?
It wasn't accurate.
Well, you, you should, you would need to submit a bid if you were going to bid on our projects.
We had contractors that, we had several contractors, more than one, mechanicals? That were more willing and downright excited about the prospect?
And, and? And, and you should submit.
Can, can you hear me?
It's for the, it's for you too? For the video?
Okay. So we had contractors that were not only willing, were downright excited about joining us? The contractors to go in and sit in front of the whole team, including the engineer that was hired? The professional engineer consultant and the town, the project team? So we had a, we, we tried to cover it from every imaginable angle. I can't force a contractor to submit a bid a certain way. They believed that the opportunity would arise? Once it went over budget, for us to get our chance to say, hey, you need to be aware of this alternate proposal? How it got handled after that? By the engineer who could redo the design, much the same way it was based on a basis of design competitor? If, if it was say, hey, we're, we're way over budget. This will get it done. We need to look at this. The engineer, uh, never saw that alternate, uh, design solution either? Nor, nor did the town. All I'm saying is, that shouldn't happen. The losers are the town. I mean, we lost, because I'm, I'm not happy about it. But, you know, as, as shown on the slide, we're not talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars. We're talking about millions.
Dan, may I ask you a quick question? The, 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 the 5.5 million dollars, 4.3, whatever? Was that the cost of the equipment? What was the installation for that equipment on top of that 5.5?
From the contractor? In the, in the budgetary proposal? Included in that alternate design that was laid on the desk of, of several project team members? The five point, he gave a range, 4.5 million to 5.5 on the high end?
Okay.
And that was turnkey with installation thing? And here, again, you recall the bullets? All of the excavation were, it, it's, it's not?
Okay.
It's, it's not the nicest way to put it, but all of the general contractor work was unnecessary.
Okay.
Could have been simply a mechanical, uh, equipment installation by a mechanical contractor.
Ms. Hockit has a?
Did, uh, did we, I mean, did we invite the contractor to come and provide, uh, any sort of information with this presentation?
I can have them if you'd like.
I'm not necessarily asking, I just, just without data and, and more information? I mean, I appreciate your slides, but also I don't know what they're based off of. And that doesn't mean that you're saying anything correct or, or anything like that? But I just don't know what any of that is based on. So I don't know which solution's best. I'm also not an engineer, so I'm not even sure I could know. Um, but I'm, I'm open to, to rallying for a process? And the improvement of a process and the change of a process? If you can think about, you know, what process you would like us to take on? But I also just, I want to, I mean, I don't think it's fair to say negative things about our contractor? When they haven't had a chance to offer their viewpoint and in their, you know, procedure going forward?
I'm not taking a shot at the contractor. They just did their job, right? Now, I, I, I do believe that there was an incentive. If, if, if I'm a general contractor and you're going to take my portion of the work? I'm not going to be overly excited about that and incented to go that route, right? As, as a general contractor. So what I'm saying is, all of that extraneous work in, in the excavation and moving things, relocating things? I, if, if given the opportunity, and I'm not suggesting I'm going to get it, by the way? There's no way in one slide presentation in a matter of minutes in a town council meeting? That I can prove?
Yeah.
In, in no uncertain terms to everybody in the room? That this really was a superior solution? But I can assure you with confidence in my tone? That if given that opportunity, oh yeah, it, it would be convincing.
Any other comments?
Is that an opportunity for the town to be able to have an open platform for, well, not just for contractors? But people that are, you know, going to be possibly bidding on any contracts? For the town to be able to present any information about the projects? Cause even if he is not here, but for the public? If there was a way, you know how we have planning commission meetings and we have all kinds of meetings? I mean, there is presentations all the time, even about closing or opening some of the streets? We have had, uh, several meetings about, uh, where we have had contractors here? Showing us some of the best solutions, even about like closing the street over here on Pepper Street? And all kinds of stuff where they did studies and everything? Cause I don't think there were, there were contractors for the town. They were not actually town employees, correct?
If, we have had contractors who are working for the town make presentations. Yes.
Well, but?
Are you talking the church people thing and somebody else? Or are you talking about?
No, I'm just talking about in general. I, I would like to see more of, you know, the other side present? If the, there should be an opportunity for them to present to even town council or the public? What their, you know, what they can do different? If it was a project of this, you know, of this, I mean, magnitude, yeah.
Part of the bidding process usually involves an exchange of information, questions and, and a, and a meeting? Like a pre-bid meeting where they talk about alternatives and answer questions? I don't know the specifics of this case, but that's normally part of the process.
When was that done, Randy?
We had pre-bid meetings on February?
Get the microphone?
February 20th and April 24th? And I don't believe, uh, environmental solutions attended, did they?
No, that, that was a meeting for the contractors.
It, it was a pre-bid meeting, so?
It was a pre-bid meeting for, for contractors. We, if I went, I would have just observed? And then I would market to the contractors. I, again, I can't dictate to them. Even if I'm there, I cannot dictate to the contractors how they, uh, propose or bid. They, there were two or three contractors that were well informed of this. They were ready to go, but just expected it to follow a different path that it did not follow. They thought, oh, once over budget, um, the opportunity would exist to present it. They were all, actually, they were rather keyed up about it. I'm aware of all the dates you mentioned, by the way. Painfully aware of them, all the way to May 23rd, when the last bid was opened. And I know it was like a week or two after that, that the, the award was made. So we followed every, every breadcrumb along the trail. And, and again, we kept trying to get an audience, but we're not granted such.
Is that a possibility, the, um, in the ARP process or something? Whatever that's called? That there is an opportunity, not just for the contractors to, uh, to do that? But also for anybody that's planning to do any of the work?
We, we do advertise our RFPs and bids on our homepage, on our RFP and bid page? And we do have pre-bid meetings? So, I mean, that, that's just basically normal practice with, uh, bids.
Is there something in the description? I'm sorry.
No, it's all right.
Is that a description in there that tells you that only contractors are able to come to these meetings?
Anyone could attend if they're interested in bidding. So, I mean, he, he could have attended if he had wanted to.
Can he have the opportunity to speak if that was the case, going back in time?
Yes, that's part of the reason we have the meeting is?
It's a question and answer period?
Correct.
Basically stating goals and objectivities? Is that kind of what a pre-bid meeting is?
Yes, yes.
This is what we expect?
Opportunity for questions, questions and comments, yes.
Okay.
I will say that after the spending over, you know, we were going to spend over 10 million dollars in a project like this? Uh, and this is just throwing numbers out there? Do you think that we would have gotten more than two bids?
If, based on what?
The amount of money spent? That if we were playing with, well, not playing, but if we were going to be paying over 10 million dollars? That, do you think we would have gotten more bids for this?
No, I, I, I don't think that was necessarily the difference maker. I think it was the manner in which the, uh, the, the bid was presented? That there were contractors? Again, I, I know we're limited on time.
Yeah, we're running out of it quick.
I mean, I'm not, I'm, I'm here Q and A now, right?
Thank you.
I'm not up here presenting. I'm just, this is dialogue. It's good, it's healthy, but how deep do you want to go? So for example, the first contractor that we approached, we decided we want to do it as a team? Like a design build team? They were on board completely? And then I got the phone call saying, hate to do this to you, Dan, but we can't bid this. And it was late in the game for the first round bid back in March? And the reason was because the criteria and the expectations and requirements? And, and the work environment that would be there for the contractor and his crew? Was completely unacceptable as far as the risks goes?
Okay.
So that, that stood in the way of round one. Then round two was slightly different version. Round three was the contractor that bought in hook, line and sinker? And delivered the alternate, uh, proposal to the, to the five, uh, several people on the, uh, project team.
Okay. Thank you.
We appreciate your time, sir.
Thank you. Again, I do appreciate the opportunity to, uh, to voice this.
I would like this to say, my two cents worth, not to you directly? But I'm very concerned about the difference in the price? And something happens somewhere? I don't know, I use the term, who dropped the ball? But that's a big difference between what we paid and what you were showing us, so?
If you believed, if you believed, and this is as important as the dollar difference on the, on the, on the CapEx side, right? The upfront cost? If you believed, and I'm not suggesting that you do? But if you reached a point where you were able to research it enough? And saw the solution that would deliver savings after the fact? And, and no weak link in, or no weak, uh, weakness in the armor? You would be even more bothered by it. That's where the real, it's easy to come in and be a low price. Apples and oranges. This was not the case.
Apples to apples.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. That's all I have, Mike.
You got it?
I got it. Got my two cents worth in.
I, I do have copies of handouts from anybody who might be interested.
Next, uh, we'll open the floor for citizens' comments. Three minutes, name and address, address your comments to the chair. Thank you.
Paul, I through 160 Alexa Lane in Christiansburg. I'm a little bit confused about the, the, uh, pre-bid process? That's open to contractors and others with information?
To be honest, anybody, anybody that wanted to attend the pre-bid meeting could.
Okay, so how many contractors attended the first and second?
There, there were, there were quite a few. I can't tell you off the top of my head. I, I can, I can get those numbers, but, but there were quite a few.
I was just curious about that. And, uh, uh, public hearings, item B. I didn't understand the purpose of that. Was that just to?
It's trying to clean up, but not, I don't want to say that it started, but just simplify the codes.
Make it easier to understand?
And, and a little bit better, a little bit better presentation as to where they fall within the codes. That's all it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Wallace, 1370 Ruby Street. I wasn't sure I could be here tonight. Chris Wallace, 1370 Ruby Street. I wasn't sure I could be here tonight. I did send a comment to Tracy. I believe she put it on Augers' desk. I'd just like you to consider it. You have eight elections, 12 square feet per property. Standard campaign sign is three square feet. So, you know, it really seems that the more important thing here is the right of the citizens, as we've always done, to express our desire for our representation in government. And limited to four out of eight, possibly 10, because you also have the school board and the board of supervisors that, that encompass small parts of Christiansburg. It just seems to me that any, you know, governmental interest in aesthetics for an election is trumped by the citizens of the town having the right to express who they would like to see lead them in the government.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other one? I will close the citizens' comment portion. Committee reports, I don't think we've had any committee meetings since the last meeting, have we?
No.
All right. Under discussion and action by mayor and council, we have a rezoning request by DW LLC, property owner and applicant to rezone property located on the north side of Brammer Lane Northeast and adjacent to the east side of 2500 Brammer Lane Northeast, consisting of 2.75 acres. Tax parcels are so listed. They would like to go, change from A agriculture to I2 general industrial. The property is designated as, as industrial and future land use map for the 2013 Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan. That's the 7,000, 9,000 square foot warehouse thing?
Yeah. Make a motion to approve. Second?
Motion in a second. Comments or questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hockett.
Aye.
That's 4-0, thank you. A condition use permit request from Lauren Ashley, Elizabeth Potts and Dustin Storm Potts. Property owners and applicant to allow for a single-chair beauty parlor as a major home occupation on property located at 450 Hemlock Street Northeast. Two-family residential district. Property is designated as residential on the future land use map, town of Christiansburg. And I will say that Planning Commission recommended the previous and this one, 7-0.
Make a motion. Second?
Motion in second. Any discussion?
I wanted to understand a little bit about this. There was a, a beauty salon in there before, correct?
No, that's her house. And she wants to, she operates a beauty salon somewhere else, and she wants to change it into a home occupancy. She wants to work out of her house.
But I, I don't know if I heard incorrectly, but I thought there was a...
She has a current salon downtown. She wants to basically close that and work, work from her home.
Oh, okay. All right, that's all.
Your second still good? Motion in second still good?
Yeah.
Any other comments?
I just want a clarification, that's all.
Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hockett.
Aye.
That's 4-0, thank you. Approval of percentage rate of the Personal Property Tax Rate Relief Act, PPTRA, for calendar year 2025.
Motion to approve. Second?
Comments?
Was that approved by the county first?
No, that's, Randy, that's yours.
I think you're thinking about the tax exemptions for the elderly and totally disabled that the county adopts. Yes, the county adopts those first. This is personal property tax, which is the, the Gilmore car tax from back years ago.
And what is it now?
Uh, there's an aside amount that was set aside every year for car tax relief. And basically, we apply that to cars that are, what, under 20, 20 years of age, of, under 20,000 of value. And of course, the amount of relief kind of goes down a little bit every year as the value of cars goes up, and also as there's more cars in town. So, so basically, that amount essentially goes down every, every year.
I think last year was 23.09, and this year's 22.69, give or take a couple of nines.
Last year was a, a much bigger decrease. I think the decrease last year was close to 3%. This year, the decrease is only 0.17%.
Yeah.
Thank you. Katie.
Do you have a motion in a second? Okay. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hockett.
Aye.
That's 4-0, thank you. Farmers Market?
I would like to actually make a motion to return the money back to the ARC grant stuff for right now, since, I know there was a presentation tonight and stuff, but I don't think the information about the spending of the, the amount of money that we're going to be spending over the $1 million on Hickok Street, that's a big one for me. I, I think with the, not giving the right information to, to the citizens, there is no transparency there.
Okay. May, may I ask before, do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. So, under the comment section, I would like, if you would consider, just to table this farmers market discussion till we can have another closed session, meeting on it.
Close?
Yeah.
Work session?
Work session, closed work session, whatever. There's just some information on the table that I'm not allowed, I'm not allowed to share now that I wanted to run by council to see if that changes the workflow any. So I'd just like to table all of this. We don't have to turn that money back in at any point in time. Is there a date on it that we have to turn it back?
But we thought we were supposed to give you the direction, right? Yeah.
But can we, if council's agreeable, can we ask you to change direction and just stop?
Yes. I, I'm on, I'll be on pause until I can let them know what action we're taking. I've already informed DHCD, Department of Housing and Community Development. They are the representatives that, they have granted us the money. And so I've let them know we are trying to make a decision. And they've visited the site this past week, and they said they'd wait to hear from us, so.
Can you explain to me one more time, because can you remind me as far as, what's the amount of vendors we are supposed to have to make sure we don't have to give the money back under the ARC? We keep this farmers market downtown again.
It would be 15 businesses impacted, positively impacted, so.
15.
So that's vendors and establishments around them that could benefit from the foot traffic. Is that, is that my understanding?
Yes, I think when they applied for the money, that it was the intent of assisting the vendors with their business.
But increasing the traffic downtown?
Yes.
But there was not an amount of, a number, I thought, I heard that we were supposed to provide a number of vendors down there, which was, this is what my biggest concern is, because we're supposed to be giving $275,000 back because we cannot have the vendors and we don't have the population downtown, just because we have a, an infrastructure and just because we have, you know, doesn't mean just build it and they'll come, because we tried this before. And we did so many things. Casey Jenkins was there, and I mean, we, he tried whatever he could to be able to bring people down there, jumping houses, painting faces. I mean, they had all kinds of Christmas and whatever events. And, I mean, they did a lot in spend. I feel like it wasn't, we had budgeted like $7,000 or $6,000 a year under the farmers market, but that's not really the figure when you consider the fact that we are using town employees to do all this. I mean, there is an expense right there that we're not telling the citizens to, the, the chances of building a structure of a bathroom inside someone else's private property for $300,000. And then, not only that, but a structure of over the $1 million to close the street that it may not even do anything for the downtown. Michael Barber had said that in the past that the downtown was there. And I mean, just because you're bringing this down there doesn't mean that you're gonna, you know what I mean? Everybody's gonna show up to the farmers market. What I really heard from the farmers market vendors, that just because you build that structure doesn't mean that they can change the selling day to a Saturday or another convenient day for the rest of the citizens.
And, and with those 15 businesses, it would be hard to, I think, with the vendors, you can show the positive impact, but other businesses, it would be hard to show that to DHCD when they do an audit, whether it impacted the individual business.
It would be hard to ask Jamie down at the barber shop if your haircuts went up significantly during the time we had the, the farmers market type thing.
Right, right. So it would be that the vendors would have to, it would have to be that the vendors were the priority.
And I think the figure we're into right now is, it's $15,000 is what we have used at this point. So that's if, if we were to cease and desist or make other plans, and that's what we would have to return to them, not the 275,000.
Oh.
There's a motion. Right. It, it would be that we just ceased the project and they wouldn't be giving us those funds. We would pay back anything that we have received from that.
It was in engineering and planning, I think, or something like that.
Well, but there was a motion to, you know, to give the money back and stop this program right now.
I, I would really like to, if, you know, we can act on, on, on your motion, and if it does or doesn't pass, I would really like to take the time, ask you to give me a couple of weeks to finish up the, with the people that have been wanting to talk to me about something. I, I can't get any deeper on it, I'm sorry.
All right. But we got a motion on the floor already, so it's not even unless Councilwoman Hicks withdraw, we need to go for the motion that's on the floor, Mayor.
I mean...
She has a withdrawal.
Has your, have you changed your mind as far as the downtown and the farmers market?
I haven't. I, what I think is irrelevant, because y'all are making the decisions unless we have a tie. However, I think the information that I am working on at least adds perspective. And that, that's all I can say. I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not going to come out and say I'm talking to anybody about anything, but I've asked, I'm asking for that time if you would withdraw this motion tonight to stop it all and do, and anything about the farmers market. And we may not, this plan, you may not like anything about what's coming, but until I get their ideas, I can't present them...
I am going to, since we are in discussion mode, disclosure of personal interest. I feel like there's more than two businesses and everything that can benefit or not benefit from this and stuff, so I'll just sign this and give it to you guys. But I'm going to give you a personal experience that took place for me. One of the reasons why I met the people at the flower shop, it was because of some of the things that I saw, the advertisements online for the other flower shop in town and, and all the stuff that was going the other direction instead of benefiting everybody. And this happened, I don't know, years ago when I went downtown to this retail store before it was mine. And one of their comments was, you know, what's the point of having, you know, a structure? What is the incentive for a business to move to your downtown location? And this is for everybody to consider. Because I think this is not just about me, because that retail store can be always changing to a lawyer's office. It can be changing to anything that accommodates the downtown area right now. And I don't foresee, you know, the downtown, all these businesses coming downtown unless something really changes. But we got to face it, that our downtown has governmental offices, it has nonprofits. And what else does it have? It has some doctors' offices, and it's very little as far as retail stores go. There is the chandelier, which is a candle company, and obviously the flower shop. Everything else, you know, not talking about the restaurants and stuff.
Barber shop and two...
Yeah, there is several barber shops, but I'm talking about retail stores.
Right.
And so I see our town growing in so many directions. It's not just the downtown. When I'm talking about the downtown, I'm not, I don't want you just to focus on the downtown. We got beautiful areas in town, Cambria area, the uptown mall, Central, the meat town, and Rutherford, then you got Roanoke Street, and you got so many places in the town that also need help. And so I'm going to tell you that, what is the incentive for a business to move to your downtown to open a store? When you have retail stores competing with possible structures, no insurance, no real estate taxes, no rents, no building insurance, no advertisement fees. Have we collected enough in sales stocks from vendors to cover the 7,000 we allocate for this market? That's not talking about over the $1 million in a structure, and that's not talking about $300,000 for a bathroom downtown. Use of town employees. Um, um, I mean, it just, there are so many things that when this comes up, I think about because of my personal experience. And my personal experience of loving this town as much as I do, because my husband and I definitely don't need a flower shop to, we can rent it all day long to all their businesses. But we invested ourselves in the downtown because we want to make a difference. And so when we think about the difference that we're making, it's not just for me, for my husband, but for our family and for the community. And a business that has been there for over 80 years, I want to make sure it's there for many, many more. And that includes the downtown area. How do we make it more commutative, you know, and viable, when you're actually taking a street, possible, taking a street off that is Hickok Street? And so that is my biggest comment. And with that, I, I am okay with moving this for that work session.
At a later date, yes.
At a later date, because I do think it is important to speak about those things, because like I said to you, not just from my experience, but the businesses that we may want to have downtown, because if you can only have a business for...
Exactly. So you're withdrawing your motion. Will you withdraw your second?
Fine.
Okay, so we will set a, a, a meeting at a later date for the farmers market, build a work session. We'll, and I will tell you at, at some point in that work session, I will probably, there will probably be a closed portion of it.
That'd be in regards to property.
Huh? In regards to property, exactly. That's what we're looking at. All right, facade grant selection committee. Basically, there is none right now. Is that correct, Mr. Wingfield, that those two appointments expired June 30th? So we do not have...
Basically, we viewed it as the, the committee expired last year. I think the staff was, I guess, tasked by the central business committee, I believe, with, I guess, coming up with some type of scoring mechanism. And staff basically asked four citizens, two of whom were on the facade selection committee last year, to do a ranking by a set criteria.
I make a motion to approve the facade grant selection committee members tonight. And before we vote on this, Tanya, is your husband placed a business in the application for the facade grant this year?
I'm not sure.
Are you sure? You're not sure?
No, I don't know.
100%?
She answered the question, Ms. Hicks. Move on.
Okay. From Randy, is it true that her husband had put in an application and then the owner of the business has also put an application, right, for the facade grant?
Yeah. I believe the business that you're referencing is Bowling Bones. Bowling Bones did submit an application. There was a conversation surrounding Koya and what is appropriate and allowed. And so we have not informed Tanya yet or her husband of how we've moved forward, because we've been in ongoing conversations with Koya. But we have allowed... But we have allowed for the application to be adjusted, and some of the information, as far as contact information, to be changed. We made this decision because we've done this in the past with previous applications, when there has been information that needed to be adjusted. So to maintain with status quo, we allowed this as they had already submitted their application.
I'm very confused about this whole thing, especially because I saw some of the conversations that took, I guess, in some of the meetings, and where even in town council, there was a vote to change the age and then of the buildings, which you will allow for this business to apply. And then there were something else that was changed under that. And I find it very kind of hard to believe that you wouldn't know that your husband had put an application in first. And I want to know, at what time the was the other application submitted for Bowling Bones? Was that before the deadline expired, or was it after?
It was before the deadline.
All right, which is still a business of employment where he makes over five thousand dollars more than the Koya forms.
We spoke to the Koya office, and they said that we were fine to move forward with Bowling Bones applying for the facade grant program. But they did advise us that it should be someone else's name on the application. So before, since it was submitted before the deadline, that's the reasoning for allowing the adjustment. If it was submitted after the deadline, we, of course, would have not allowed for the adjustment.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So you're the facade grant committee.
I made a, I made a motion.
Asking, yeah, you asked that.
For the members, yeah.
Who are they?
Did I get a second? It's who?
Ashley Hill and Stacy Martin at this point are the only two we have, right?
Okay, so then we should allow for that. Do you have anybody else that's in the public?
Yeah, so I think that there has been a little bit of confusion on what needs to be appointed and how things went in the past and how things have gone this year. So the selection committee, what they've done so far is just score the applications based off of a rubric. And I have a slide if you all would like to see it regarding the differences from last year to this year as far as the selection committee. But since it was not appointed by town council or instructed by our central business district committee, we simply talked about some suggestions of people, and then staff was allowed or instructed to move forward with who we thought would be good for the committee. We gathered those people together and reviewed the qualified applications as staff had seen fit. So I don't know if.
I am very confused, because advertised to the public was on four eleven twenty twenty-five. That they, that's when the announcement was for the simple steps of this committee. Why are we not following that process when it was advertised? Why is the town not coming to town council to get direction? Well, let's see. This was advertised to the public from four one twenty twenty-five, three fifty-five PM to seven one twenty twenty-five, twelve AM. The simple three-step process. Fill out the application, tell us the property improvements you're planning, and complete the application checklist. The central business district committee will appoint a selection committee to score the applications and select the goodies. Worthies will be announced and will have until June thirty twenty twenty-six to complete projects and claim the reimbursements. So I want to kind of get a real answer on this. Is that staff? Who is the public party here? Because it requires public notice. And when I hear that you guys selected these people, it has been select, you guys, the town does actually select those members for years. I have been part of central business before and everything, and it hasn't changed from now to before. You guys were in charge of calling people and trying to get them to whatever. There was not, we were not the people, really. You guys gave us that information, and we provided that. And then we came to town council and told the town council, you know, these are the people that I think will make, you know, that selection committee. That, we didn't see any other changes on that. It would have been okay if you would have come or somebody from staff and say, hey, we want to make these changes. We want to make this, and we don't think that they are a public party. But I do think they are a public body. And when we have these meetings, when we're giving out taxpayers' money, that isn't the best interest for transparency to provide that information to the public. So I do think that it is important for me to see that out there and for people to actually view this these meetings, just like the same thing that when you guys were talking about how you wanted Bowling Bones to apply for this. It's not that I'm against the business whatsoever. I'm just very dissatisfied how the process has taken place.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Ball?
Can I explain the process to you? So one thing that I would like to address, though, is that I hear what you're saying. You have been on the committee for many years. This is a new team for us. So if something has fallen through the cracks, I sincerely apologize. We are people, and we are doing the best that we can. However, I do not feel that anything that we've done has been wrong based off of our conversations as staff and our conversations with our town attorney and our conversations with the FOIA council. And I'd love to explain the process. So there are a few things we'd like to clarify regarding the program. These changes are a result of how the program has grown throughout the years. It's evolved throughout the years. Every year, it seems to get better. We hope, and we hope to continue that. At least, that's our feeling. As we mentioned in our March presentation, communication was the main frustration that we heard back from applicants who were both awarded and rejected. People were very frustrated with a lack of communication last cycle. So addressing this issue was a priority. We heard what you all said about the frustration from people. Some were awarded, some were not, and they didn't hear anything. We realized that that was unacceptable. There was weird turnover. We wanted to fix that, and we did. During the presentation in March, we highlighted three main goals for the twenty twenty-five cycle, communication. We wanted to reach fifty businesses through one-on-one communication, and we did that. Quality applications. We wanted to increase and see an increase in quality applications for this award. And after an internal staff review, we've seen a fifty percent increase in applications this year, with the potential for more after review within the central business district committee. And then the last one is project completion. Seventy percent of the projects for those awarded, we want to see complete by June thirtieth. That hasn't happened yet. We'll have to wait till June thirtieth to see. There have been some questions regarding the process between last year and this year, and so I've listed the differences on the screen. So last year, the selection committee was selected by central business. This year, the selection committee was selected by staff. It was not appointed. Last year, it seems that it was appointed, if you guys voted on it. Last year, town council members serving on central business also served on the selection committee. This year, town council members serving on central business do not serve on the selection committee. We feel like this is a better way to get unbiased, more transparent information. Last year, a score sheet or rubric, as we're calling it, was not used. Now, this is due to a shortened timeline, staff turnover, but the last cycle did not use a score sheet. This year, our selection committee only has used a score sheet or a rubric to this point. Last year, the selection committee and central business jointly discussed and interpreted applications. Jointly, they determined eligibility. You all had discussions of gray areas, and should this be allowed, should this not? The selection committee used a rubric to determine an objective, transparent, and actionable ranking to give a recommendation to central business. They are not interpreting things to this point. Central business will then separately discuss the applications and the ranking and any eligibility questions before making recommendations to town council. Last year, the selection committee was created by central business and tasked with making decisions. Originally, that's how we had planned it, and that's why, as you read in the paperwork, it did say central business will create the selection committee. Instead, that changed. That was made back in March. You can call it a mistake. What staff is calling it is how we've seen that the program needed to adjust. If there's incorrect information on what we need to bring to town council versus what we're allowed to receive as far as guidance from central business, I think that's a town council discussion. But we received guidance that instead of central business creating a selection committee, staff could create the selection committee to helpfully.
Stop for one second, please. I'm sorry. Who gave you that guidance?
We had the conversation in central business.
And central business, but that should have been done in town council. All those decisions have always come to town council in the past. We couldn't make a simple change when we were part of central business, and she can tell you that. We were literally slammed over here by one of our town employees, where she called us, we were sabotaging the program. We had not done nothing to the program.
Thank you, thank you.
And so I put a motion out there to.
Thank you.
What? I am.
Will you finish, will you finish the presentation?
Yeah, I would like to. Thank you. So the application states that central business district committee will appoint a selection committee. The committee instead entrusted staff, central business entrusted staff, to determine who should serve on the committee and move forward with this process in an effort to increase objectiveness, equity, and timeliness. That's what we're, you're saying transparency. We echo that and are wanting transparency. There is no secret hidden agenda. We had just hoped that we would be able to use the rubric to get unbiased information and then allow central business in our public meeting to review that information and have that to help make their decision. This explains why staff's conversation with the selection committee was not advertised. That being said, we have a completely new staff working with the central business district committee committee on this program. There are already several lessons that we have learned, one of them being the need for program clarity. This includes the guidelines and the process. For instance, there's always been room for interpretation within the guidelines. Central business and selection committee discussed that last year. We're seeing that same thing this year. While communication was the first issue that we addressed and needed immediate action, our goal for the next cycle in twenty twenty-six would be to eliminate as much of that room for interpretation as possible, so that it's not feelings and emotions and what certain people see is appropriate, so that it's facts that the applicant needs to meet in order to receive the award. So at this point, there are two paths forward. Past is in the past. How do we move forward? Option one for us, give the applications to central business along with the rubric based ranking that the selection committee gave us, and then we can let the central business committee discuss eligible eligibility questions and make those decisions. The second option is to have the selection committee discuss, interpret guidelines and eligibility questions, and then make a recommendation. If we went with option two, of course, we would advertise this meeting, because it would not be a ranking based off of a rubric. It would be discussing questions in gray areas, and then also after this conversation, we would advertise. I think if we preach transparency, it's important for me to note that staff is not perfect and that this is not a perfect program, but in the name of transparency, we are working diligently to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars that fund the program, and we are proud of the work that we've done so far.
Thank you.
So I see some of the things that, why we need those public inputs, or not even input, but the transparency of showing those recordings to the public, or even for them to be able to be welcome to these meetings. A lot of it is like, I was looking at the stuff where the side of the building is okay now, but it wasn't okay last year. But I didn't see that coming to town council to make that change in here. From the past, we told businesses like Route Eight Donuts that they couldn't qualify for that because it was on the side of their building. But that didn't come to town council. And so I am, you know how you were saying that we need to make sure that we are very cleared in how we're doing that? Well, one of the clarity things is that that comes to town council, we all voted on these changes, or we don't vote on the changes, but those changes have changed. We have made any changes in the past that have come to town council. I have been very, I mean, in the past, making sure that everybody knows exactly what we're doing and how we're doing it, because, you know, this is taxpayers' money. And so for me, even seeing what the facade grant program is right now, I mean, even with the central business, you change things to allow other businesses to apply, which it will benefit, obviously, the one person, but and then other people, but at the same time, there was no disclosures taking place with that.
We submitted the changes to the process, to town council.
With the side of the building and stuff? I don't remember seeing that.
As far as like how detailed, but we did present changes. And then I will say, I actually agree with what you're saying. As I mentioned, there is room for interpretation as you all serving on both central business and the selection committee last year. You all talked through the applications and determined, does this make sense? Does this feel like it fits? What our hope moving forward, now that we, the current staff, you know, that's working on this project are seeing, is that yeah, we don't, we don't want that gray area. We don't want there to be conversations about like, you know, does this make sense? We want it to be very clear, and it hasn't been clear in the past, and we are going to work toward fixing that in the future.
I made a motion to approve the facade grant selection committee members, Ashley Hill and Stacy Martin.
There's more members, I think, on there than that.
Well, that's the selection, that's not.
Not town employees. I'm talking about the selection committee.
Understand that, but I think Stacy and Ashley.
Astley, and isn't there one more?
There were two other people that served on, that served on that.
Alfie.
Alfie, okay.
Yeah, and I'm not sure about the fourth one off the table.
So, but they, but they are not, they are not officially appointed. I guess the question here is, do we need to officially appoint a facade grant selection committee if we're going to go with the citizen input advice to the council, to the manager?
I want a selection committee, and I made a motion about having a selection committee and I make the changes on that.
Go have a second.
Second.
Thank you.
Who are you, who are you approving?
Ashley and Stacy, is that correct?
Ashley Hill and Stacy for right now.
Astley, Stacy, Alfie, and, you know, the there's one more. James Kabler.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what was the last?
James Kabler.
How do you spell that?
C-A-B-L-E-R.
J-A-M-E-S-C-A-B-L-E-R.
He is with Quarterback and Trust.
Thank you.
Regional kind of guy with him.
I am not Christine, so you understand.
Christina.
Christina, I'm sorry. I want to make sure that this, when we have these committees, that, and especially since they give us information, make votes, that those meetings are recorded, since they will become public body. And that's my biggest intentions about that. So I want to make sure that this are recorded and for the public. So one day, I don't, because this happened years ago, one of the things was that, oh, well, we didn't hear, how did these people get money and why did they get it?
But I think you, I think you've made your point. We understand, and I appreciate that, and I think it's a point well, well taken, so.
And I completely understand. We went by what we perceived to be our legal requirements, and that was confirmed by our attorney in the FOIA office. But I also understand that there's, you know, no problem with being, with sharing everything, so.
So the, the motion is to approve the four current members?
That's correct. And there was a second. There is.
Four.
Astley, Stacy Martin, James Kabler, and Alfie.
Alfie.
Alfie, I'm sorry.
Alfie.
What's her last name?
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I appreciate that.
That's the motion and the second is those four.
Yes.
Any other discussion?
I mean, just to clarify, I'm still not expecting them to necessarily meet in a public session and provide their recommendations. I'm still expecting that they're just scoring the rubric. Are you all asking us to let them decide who the winners will be and bring that to central business district?
They never make that decision. They just give us, they give us their opinion on who they should, they think that they should get it.
So they rank in school.
And then they give it to us, to central business, and central business gives it to us, so we can board in town council.
Yeah, but you guys were a part of that discussion last time, right? You worked with them to have a discussion on who those winners would be?
And establish their opinion. Which this year, at this point, the selection committee has no opinion. We haven't received any input. All they. All they've done is look at the rubric and look at the applications and determine if it meets the criteria and just mark the.
They still advise town council or what we should.
They'll advise central business district committee, and that is what my expectation is. I'm not asking them to meet just because we're, I'm fine with the town council. I mean, no problem whatsoever with town council approving the selection committee, but I'm still not asking them to advise council. I'm asking them to advise the committee.
They're asking, they're asking to advise staff.
So what I'm saying is, I wouldn't expect a public meeting. They're not meeting. They're not meeting at all. They're going to score.
They are going to be meeting when they have done.
Didn't they just meet?
That committee will not be meeting.
Didn't they have a, a meeting a few days ago?
No, we did not. We had our initial meeting, which was to discuss, you know, giving them the applications and what the rubric looks like, but they have not met since. And that's where we need clarification on option one or two, because if we go with how it is right now and the selection committee just gives their scored rubric to central business, then we will not.
Which is fine to give it to central business and central business bring it to us.
But if we, then we will not have any meetings recorded.
Well, it will be a selection committee, which it will advise central business to give us advisory. What's the difference between that and the hours committee?
We have a motion in a second. Would you please stop calling the vote?
Advisory committee.
I'm not sure who I'm supposed to listen to when you're both talking. I'm sorry, respectfully.
I lead the, I'm, I'm leading the meetings who we're calling for. Me, I'm calling for the vote. Thank you.
Councilman Bishop. Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett.
Aye.
It's four, thank you very much. Now, we have the, and so much is passed over the bridge across the pages. We have your motion, Kim, about the retracting the vote on the closed session. Is that correct? And Miss Hicks made her statement. Is that a legal motion, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, I need to read mine.
I'm sorry, is it, I'm asking, Mr. Brown, is that?
It is provided for in the, in the town code.
Okay, that's fine. Don't ask. So we have a.
So I guess we have to make another motion again, make the motion again, so.
Okay. I don't need to state the beginning.
I won't, but I will second it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to reconsider the certification vote of the closed meeting that took place on August twenty six, twenty twenty five. And I have given Tracy a copy of two statements, one by Johanna Hicks and one by myself that I'm going to read now. And this has been copied to the mayor, council, our attorney and clerk. Per town code section two dash six seven, I would like to make a motion to reconsider the certification of our closed meeting on August twenty six, twenty twenty five. Town code section two dash sixty six states that dissent or protest must be filed in writing and presented at the next town council meeting in respectful language. The reason for my dissent and disclosure is that I don't feel we met the requirements under the Code of Virginia. Two dot two dash three seven one one A one. The requirement states that a request for a closed meeting be for discussion, consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline or resignation of specific public offices, appointees or employees of any public body, an evaluation of performance of departments or schools of higher education where such evaluation will necessarily involve the discussion of specific individuals. This is not what took place. We did not discuss specific individuals. Instead, we were informed of a private quorum of Mayor Mike Barber, council members Tanya Hackett, Casey Jenkins, Sam Bishop and Tim Wilson, who voted to establish a screening committee without the knowledge or recognition of councilwoman Johanna Hicks or myself. Mayor Barber stated that he took this approach to avoid dealing with councilwoman Hicks and myself, both duly elected. Transparency is important, and I do not find any record of said meeting, votes, minutes or a public disclosure of this meeting. Action by council is to be made in a public meeting with a vote made in public. We were told that Councilman Wilson and Councilwoman Hackett both voted by phone. It is my understanding that this is not permissible. It's concerning to me that the records that I received through my FOIA requests from the local government entities involved with this committee show that this committee was formed on or before August thirteenth, two thousand twenty five. For all of these reasons and for the sake of public transparency, I make the motion to reconsider the certification of the closed meeting held on August twenty six, twenty twenty five.
It's a second from Miss Hicks, is that correct?
Yes.
Discussion?
Discussion. I have a question. I need some clarification. You keep saying, I keep hearing the word that I voted on something. In my mind, I didn't vote on anything. I gave my opinion and so I.
Go ahead. You're right, you're right.
So I don't know where the word, the term vote came from.
That came from the mayor who spoke for you.
That's his opinion.
Yes.
But I did not vote.
He used, he used what you said, okay, to move forward and to form a committee and to take action without the knowledge of the public or two council members. And I do believe you, Sam Bishop, I believe you were used.
They.
I did not vote.
I don't think any, in, in the heat of the conversation, because it was heated last week, I used the word quorum, which I realized would have implied a meeting. There was no meeting. There were separate phone calls to each one asking their opinion, and I got, I did not get anybody to disagree. Do I, do I take it right on the chin for not contracting Miss Hicks and Miss Bowman? I certainly do. That's my bad. I admit to it. But there was no illegal meeting. The FOIA council even says that those actions are permissible by me and are, and were done in the proper way.
He also told us that it was illegal. I have copies from FOIA as well, and I'm still waiting on the FOIAs that I asked for from the town.
Okay, well, we have different.
I want.
We have different FOIAs, I'm speaking. We have different FOIAs, so would you call, would you call the vote?
I, I'm, I haven't spoken what I was going to say. I would really like to get the information I asked from, I want the date that you got the call. You said, Tanya, you got a call. I want the same thing from Tim Wilson. I know Casey Jenkins is no longer here, but I do want to know also what day you met with the mayor on his office with A N G. Sam, if I can get that information, please, that would be great.
I'd have to, we'd have to look back and see, so.
If you, if I can get that, that would be great.
I heard you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so.
So can I get some clarification on this vote that we're going to take? Is this so, you, you're two count, you, the way you voted?
You can reiterate your vote.
Yes, because the stuff that took place in the meeting is not what we went to.
You're changing your vote?
Yes.
That's what.
Okay, just to make sure, I'm ready to vote on, thank you.
We're gonna read the certified.
Okay.
Councilman Bishop. Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett.
Aye.
Okay, those four over. So your votes are rescinded. Thank you. Tell me, enter your report.
There's a blood draw.
Get on that microphone.
Blood draw at the rescue squad. It is Monday, September fifteenth from noon to seven P M. And donors would receive a thirty dollar gift card and EMS receives ten dollars for each donation. And there's free food and drink available, and that will be at our rescue squad building. And I'll mention that Wilderness Trail Festival is Saturday, September twentieth from nine to four downtown. Also, a town council had said to set a work session for Tuesday, September sixteenth in regards to the town candidate positions. You did not tell us a time on that. Do you want to still meet that date?
The, what are we doing, six thirty? Six thirty? On Tuesday? Okay, that seems to be the general knowledge.
And that's to speak of what again?
That is in regards to the town can, uh, town council candidate positions.
Okay.
What was that date again?
The sixteenth, next, next Tuesday, six thirty. And there is a work session on the seventeenth, Wednesday. Do you want to have that meeting?
No, we're not. You were not part of the meeting, so we, we talk about days and that day we completely are not going to be meeting. We're only going to have the sixteenth.
Okay.
Cancel the meeting, cancel the meeting on the seventeenth.
Right.
Yes.
That's all I've got.
Very good. Mr. Brown?
Nothing to report, Mayor.
You sure?
Any other staff?
Nothing, nothing big. I just want to give you guys a heads up that on the bill report for next week, the bill list, in mid-July, it was brought to our attention that during the Munis conversion of the utility billing system, that Corning was overcharged. They were charged the county rates instead of the town rates and they're in the town. So we, the utility billing specialists generated their adjustments to their bills and they applied the credit to their account, but they've now asked for a refund. They've used part of it, but they're asking for a refund and it's about a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. So that will probably sand out. So I just wanted to give you guys a heads up. But it does not impact our bottom line as it wouldn't have been budgeted as revenue anyway, since it was an overcharge.
Is that for the year?
No, it would have been, we did the conversion in October, October of twenty four, so it wasn't quite a year.
So we were overcharging them for twelve months or so, eight months?
Just from October until June.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, that works.
Thank you for the explanation.
Anything else? Council reports? Mr. Bishop?
No report.
Mrs. Hackett?
Nothing to report.
Mrs. Hicks?
Nothing to report.
Mrs. Bowman?
Nothing.
Thank you. Is there any other business to come before council?
Yes, sir. Like to request a closed meeting under Code of Virginia, two point two dash three seven one one A one for discussion, consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees or employees of any public body, an evaluation of performance of departments or schools of public institutions of higher education where such evaluation will necessarily involve discussion of the performance of specific individuals. The closed meeting is being held for discussion of the pending town council vacancy.
You have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, discussion, Madam Clerk.
Can we take a small break?
Oh, yeah, we will.
Councilman Bishop. Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. We're going to take about a three or four minute break and the only staff in that will be attending, as far as I'm determining, is HR Director, Mrs. Downs. Thank you.